So what we will hopefully are able to see my screen. So what we will do is we will start with own Kubernetes environment. So until this point of time, we were using the interactive Kubernetes shell. And whenever I have to use this interactive shell, I can simply come here and I can simply click on this and I can start my Kubernetes shell. Okay, but this shell which we get we get from Kubernetes is more of a testing kind of environment where I can test as per my requirement. So what I am going to do is I am going to go to the official website of Kubernetes and I will go here getting started Kubernetes. So if I come to this location getting started with Kubernetes, I will find the documentation. Give me one second. Okay, so this is the official documentation which we have. And here it says that you can start your Kubernetes environment. There are production environment setups, production environment. If you click here or go one step back. You can see here there is something called learning environment. Learning environment is more of a place where you can just start your work and start learning. So there is a learning environment and here those tools are called which we have just now installed like cube C T L and mini cube and all those things. So these are learning environment. But when you come to a production grade work, you will be working with something like this production environment and here you will have a big cluster. Okay, it will not be like simple mini cube kind of thing. It will be a big cluster where you will be doing a lot of things. So in production environment, if you come here installing Kubernetes. So if you see installing Kubernetes, there are major ways in which we install like cube A D M is there, COPs is there, which is Kubernetes operation, cube spray. So these are the tools which will help you to install Kubernetes. So there are hundred of different ways by which you can install Kubernetes. Okay. If you go by this guy. One second, production environment. Here you will see something like turn turnkey cloud solution. So turnkey cloud solution is nothing but the solution which is provided by the cloud vendors. Like if you are using A W S, they give you E K S, elastic Kubernetes service, Azure gives you E K S. If you have different cloud vendor, you can see different different options are there that there like G C P has G K E. So if you see there is a big list of cloud vendors and all of them have their own version of Kubernetes. Okay, now the way is the way of installation will be definitely little bit different, but at the end of the day when the Kubernetes is installed. You start working, the commands and all will be same. Okay, so if I come to this production environment again. And if I come to installing Kubernetes. And installing Kubernetes with COPs. Okay, it will tell me how to start the cluster. If you are using Linux, you go here Linux and then the first thing which it will ask you to is install uh COPs, then you install cube C T L. So there are many things which you are going to install. Now the same thing, if I want to install on A W S environment, so I will say cube C T L or Kubernetes. Installation on Amazon Linux. I will share all these links with you. So here it says if you are installing or updating Amazon E K S, which is the Amazon version of Kubernetes. These are the commands which you are going to do. So first you will install cube C T L. Then you will install E K C T L and then you create your cluster. Now, one by one, we will do all these things. Now, whatever I am going to do, I have already documented it. Here in this document, you can go ahead and take this document for your reference or if you want to read this document which I am showing you right now, you can take that also. So both of them has the same content. So if I come here, this is E K S. And this is the place where I am telling how to install E K S. Now it is saying that the documents which I am showing you is this U R L. This is the place from where even I have taken everything. And this is what is required. The first thing is you need a Amazon E C two instance. Okay. So let me go ahead to my account and start my work. So I will log into console dot A W S dot Amazon dot com and here I will first sign in. Once I sign in, I will go ahead and create a E C two instance, a basic E C two instance which you have like come here. See, this is a normal Kubernetes machine. So launch instance. Come here and see K eight S M G M T node. So this is my management node or the master node. Okay, then you can come down here. You can see that I am going to use Amazon Linux. I am going to use sixty four bit T two micro is okay for now, but later if you want, you have to upgrade it. Keep it, you can create a new one like you can see K eight S M G M T key, something like this is what I am creating. I will create a P M P P K key because I will connect via putty. So enter. So this gets downloaded here also is chosen here. Go further down. Network setting, use a security group where port twenty two is open. So I already have one security group. Then all the way you can go down and leave everything as it is. You don't have to do anything. Simply come here and wait for your machine to come up. Once your machine is up, you will start installing the software. So this is the machine which I have. This is the I P address. Okay, so I will try to connect to this machine. How to connect? So putty. I will say E C two minus user, which is the default user and the I P address. They change the appearance, make the font size a little bit bigger. Then come here S S H art and go and browse the key which you have just now generated. So this is my key. Open it up and it says accept the connection and it says this is your key. So say sudo su hyphen and say host name and say K A S M G M T node and again sudo su hyphen. So if you see here, I am all set to start my work. Now, back to the document. Here it says once you have installed Amazon Linux, you should go ahead and install A W S C L I. So if you want a particular version, so I am taking all these things from the document here only. Okay, so install cube C T L. So here if you come Linux. So it says one point two three is the latest version. If you want one point two three, this is the command. If you want one point two two, this is the command. Okay, so you will have to tell which version you want to one point two two point six. So in my document, let me come here. And wait, 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 wait. Before that, we have to install A W S C L I. Okay, just go back here. Here. So A W S C L I, this is what we are trying to install. Okay, so this is the document. Okay, install, update and uninstall A W S C L I. So if you are using old version, you have to uninstall. So basically I will come here and say A W S minus minus version. So if you see here, I am using a old version of A W S C L I, which is one point one eight. And Python is also old version two point seven. So what I will do is I will upgrade myself. How to do that? So the command is here. One more thing, there is no requirement for you to learn these commands. Okay, it is not like you have to learn these commands by heart. Okay, nobody will ask you these commands, but in case you are working as an admin, then you will have to go ahead and run these commands. So now if you clear all these things and just exit for because as of now after installation also if you come here and say A W S version, it will still show you the older version. So just exit and again say sudo su hyphen means exit and come out again. Now if you come here and say A W S version. You will see it is showing you the latest version. So earlier the version was one point one eight and it was Python two point seven. After installing the A W S C L I, I have this version two point seven and Python is also three point nine. Means I have the latest version of A W S C L I. So as per the documentation, the first thing was A W S C L I. Okay, done. Then I have to install cube C T L and E K S C T L. Okay, so I am back to my documentation. Now here it is saying. So this or in my document, I am using one point two one. Okay, but in case you want the latest version, you can go with that. So suppose you want to go with one point two one only, then take this set of commands. And just go ahead and install this on your machine. So basically we are installing cube C T L as of now. Okay. So first is A W S C L I, second is cube C T L, third one will be E K S C T L. So this whatever we are doing, we are doing only for A W S. Obviously, when you install it on G C P, it will be different. So cube C T L version. And you can see one point two one is installed for you. Okay, so two commands are done, A W S minus minus version. So this is the A W S latest version and cube C T L version. So these two tools are installed for me, this and this. The third tool which I would like to install here is E K S C T L. So again, take this set of command. And run it here. Now E K S is elastic Kubernetes service. If you see here elastic Kubernetes service ka version, then I have one point one three. Can I not create it by console? Means can I come here and directly create it? E K S. So if you want, you can directly come and create here also. There is no harm in creating directly. But I don't want to create it like this. I would like to create it in the different way in the E K S C T L way. Okay, so this is the reason I am not directly creating from here. I am creating it via logging into my container. Okay. So the third command which I have to run is E K C T L done. Then it says create I M user which will have all these permissions. Now I M is nothing but it is a way of logging in. Okay, or you when you login, you login as a root user, but when you work, you will not get the root access. Okay, so you will create a I M user. How to do that? Come to your account, come here and say I A M. Okay, I M is you manage the access of A W S. So click on this. One second. Okay, so if I come here to my I M, I will go to roles. Okay. Create role. Come here and say I am going to create a role for E C two. So this is my E C two, I am going to create a role for this guy. And go down and say next. You can see what all permissions are needed. So I will start with admin permission, admin A D M I, A D M I N, I S T R A T O R. Administrator access. Okay. So admin access, huh? So I will give admin access one. Then you will need two more access, so three more. You have something called cloud formation. So cloud information full access is what you will need, cloud formation full access. Then you will need I A M full access, I A M full access. This and then finally you will need E C two full access. E C two full access. So basically on your behalf, Amazon will do a lot of things. That's the reason we are providing all the kind of access to this. Role name. So let me see K eight S M M T node rule, something like this I will give. Okay, and just go all the way down here and say these are the permissions I have given, E C two full access, A I M full access, cloud formation, full access and administrator access and you have to simply come here and say create the rule. Now it will take some time and the role will be created. Once the role is created, you will get a green mark here. So K A T S management node role has been created. Come here, this is your instance, go to action, go to security. Modify I M road, click on this, come here and paste this rule. So you can see K A T S management node role, update the I M. So you have the E C two instance, you have all the software installed and you have given all the necessary powers. Now let's go ahead. What does it say? Once this is done. You can create your cluster by running a command like this or let me come here and take the command. Uh create your first E C two cluster, come here. So here all these things are done, E K S, this is done. Now this is how you create your cluster. So A W S cloud formation. Create stack which region, what is the name of the stack and in case you want to run it via template or you can with like this one second. Once again, come here. It will talk just it's not that. Or get this is the way how you one second, let me plug in the charger. Okay, so this is the command, E K S create cluster, take this, bring it to a notepad. So you say E K S cluster, E K S create cluster, give a name to the cluster and which region you want to. Okay, so something like this I have already done here. And I will run this command. So I will say E K S C T L, create a cluster for me and the name of the cluster I am giving it as my cluster, you give any name and the one second. So I am saying E K S create a cluster for me and the name of the cluster I have given as demo cluster. And I am going to create it in the region. So for you, the region will be I am in Mumbai. So if I click here, it is A P South one. So I will come here and see A P S O U T H A P South one and the node type means the worker node will be T two medium. If you want, you can make it small also. But at times this worker node does not work properly in the T two micro, so I can go with T three micro. Okay, so you choose the instance type. Obviously, if the workload is more, you will need a bigger instance. But if the workload is less, you can go with T two micro. But many a times with T two micro, it gives problem. But definitely when you come out of T two micro, it will create some cost. Okay, anyhow, this is my machine. And from here I will just run this command, E K S C T L, create cluster, name of the cluster I have given as demo cluster, I am creating it in A P South one. And the node type is T three micro. Now what you will see is it is saying deploying the stack E K S C T L demo cluster. Cluster. So this is what is happening. And if you read through all these things, the networking will be taken care by Amazon. Okay, and it will make A P I calls and it will do everything in the background. And here it says if you encounter any issue, go to the cloud formation console and try to check the details. So let me go here to cloud formation. Cloud formation. And here you will see this E K S cluster, cluster, cluster is getting creation in progress. Now when you come here events. These are the things which are happening in the background. So there are many things which will happen in the background. See here, the control plane is getting created. The route table is getting created. So networking part, all these things are getting created and all these things will be taken care by Amazon. So when you come to E K S, okay, there are two things. It's a managed service. Managed service means most of the work will be done by A W S only. Okay, so it is like when you go to market, you buy a ready made T shirt or ready made shirt and one is you go to the market and you buy the raw material and you get it done by yourself. Okay, so if I come here, it will take some time, another five minutes it will take to create this. Okay, let's wait for five minutes. I will go on mute for five minutes. Okay, so in five minutes you will see this creation in progress will turn into it is created, but it will take some time.
Yeah, can I please ask you a question? Uh hi, Vipass.
Second, one second, give me one second. Yeah, so it will take some five minutes to create. Meanwhile, if you have any questions, please go ahead.
Yes, please. Um yeah, I just had the question in regards to uh blue green deployment. And see when, okay, I understand. So the blue is the old one and and then the green is the new environment. Uh once it's been tested, then we just um changed the pointer like using the selector from the service one to service two to the new size. Now my question is, how will people like um why don't we just use um like how would the DNS attach to the service? Because we use the service to expose the ports, then what do you like, would you use um to attach the DNS to the service?
Wait, I am not getting your question. Give me two minutes. I will join back. One second.
No, okay.
Give me some five minutes. Okay, let me let this cluster get created, then I will take questions. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, let's take few questions here. It is still creation under progress. So you will see there are a lot of things which will get created in the background. But for me, this is the main thing which I am checking and as of now I can see it is creation in progress means it is still getting created. So you will wait for this. Yeah, please go ahead.
Yeah, so what I was saying is we use services to expose the the ports. But obviously people don't use that to the public. So obviously people don't use the I P and not ports and application name. So how is the service linked to the DNS?
Okay, see there is something called Egress and Ingress. Okay, so when I go full fledgedly into services, I will teach you that when you expose it only via I P address, okay. There are lot of problems associated with that like you don't have any S S L certificate, you don't have any proper authentication. So we take a step ahead and we move to Egress. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, this is what I was wondering like because there is so many things that we are missing. So this was only, okay, thank you so much.
So when you go to Egress, you will have Ingress controller and all those things. Which will make sure that whatever you are trying to access over H T T P or H T T P S or what is inside the port that is running in a secured manner and there this DNS mapping will also come into picture.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because uh the thing is like regarding creating the instances A W S, you added the security group, but what ports you added.
It is you have to just make sure that port number twenty two is open. That is the most important port. Apart from that, others can be as it is.
Okay, and the next question is like regarding the installation part, can you show me the diagrammatic way of with the M S paint or something like the cluster creation and the node worker node creation that what you have done in the manual way? That uh can you show in a diagrammatic way so that it will be easy?
So basically what we are trying to do here is we get one master node. So this is my master. Okay, so first of all, let me come back to the same concept which I started earlier. So when I say cluster. I have master and then there can be N number of worker nodes. Okay. Okay, now, when I started my work, I started with Mini Cube. So Mini Cube is a place where you will have master and your worker node at the same location, so nothing changes here. So one single, we say single node machine means in the same machine you have master and the worker node, but. When we go ahead with some cloud provider, okay, like A W S, they give you something called managed services. Managed services. So what they do is, they give you the control plane or the master node. The moment they give you the control plane, the entire management related work will go to this guy. And then you can add N number of worker nodes as per your demand, so as of now, I have added two worker nodes, okay? And these two worker nodes will be the one who will be doing the day-to-day activity for me. And the management will be done by control plane, which is in turn managed by A W S services. That's why I'm saying it's a managed service, but if you are not using any cloud provider and you say that I want to do everything from scratch. Then first you install your master and then you install the worker nodes, so in the coming class I will show you, there is something called COPS. COPS is Kubernetes operations, so using Kubernetes operations, you install everything from scratch, you say these number of worker nodes I need. These number of master nodes I need, okay, and you do everything, so COPS will come later, but the thing what I am doing right now is. Installing via E K S C T L. So when I say E K C T L, it is Elastic Kubernetes Service and it is happening via a CLI or a control plate. Now, when I go to documentation, it says you should have an EC two instance here and the EC two should have the required I M permissions. Okay, then it says on this EC two instance, you should have the CLI latest version, you should have Cube C T L. And finally, you should have the E K S C T L, so these are the three softwares which I need, the moment I have these three softwares. I use command create E K S C T L, E K S C T L, create whatever name you want to give. And whatever capacity you want to give and you run it, so internally what happens, a cloud formation template will automatically spin up. And it will create the entire infrastructure for you. Okay, so if you see here, it says E K S C T L demo cluster creation is complete, now if you come here, you will still say it is. Waiting for the cloud formation to complete, but I can see it is complete, meanwhile, if I go here. Here, and I simply say E K S. I will see one Elastic Kubernetes Service has been brought up, see here, this demo cluster is active and it is one point two two which is running, okay? New Kubernetes version is available for this cluster, so if you want, you can update it to one point two three, okay? Now, with this cluster, I should have worker nodes, so if I come back to EC two. This is my EC two. So if I come to my EC two and just refresh this guy. You will see this is my K H S management node and on top of this you will see there will be other nodes, just let me wait for a minute or two. You will see there will be some worker nodes which will come up automatically, because while creating the cluster, I told something like this. Node type is T two micro, so by default the count is two, so two worker nodes will come up. So let me just wait for this particular thing to complete, it's still waiting, okay, the moment this is complete, you will see two more worker nodes will come up here. This is Jenkins, forget about this, I'm not talking about this guy, you can see here, demo cluster N G. Nine eight zero E F and nine, so these two have come up and it is T three micro and it is not that I have manually created it. You can come here and see the timing. Nineteen forty-four, nineteen forty-four, this is seven forty-four, just now it has come up and once it is. Status is ready, you will be able to see three containers or three nodes which will be running. One being my master node and two worker nodes, so if you see here, this is my master node or the control plane and this is my worker node one, worker node two. Once this is done, I'm waiting for a successful message here, I will get a success message here and if I come here and say Cube C T L get nodes. I will see that there are two worker nodes, the master node anyhow I know is the control plane, so it will not show up here. But it will show you that there are two worker nodes, so basically, take a EC two instance, give required permission, install Cube C T L. A W S C L I and E K S C T L and then you run and you will see this environment is up and running and. Let it up. And just to put things at place, I told that I will also teach you another way of creating this. Where I will teach you how to work with this, so there is a documentation here, uh, service hiding. I don't think it is here.
Because how two nodes created, we given only one?
I told that is default, I have not mentioned anywhere as one or two, I just went ahead and I created it, so that is the default.
Yeah, through that command, definitely two nodes will be.
Two parts will be created, see default is one master, two worker node.
Yeah, yeah, it's clear because, thanks. And the commands will be same, right?
E K S. Once it is installed, once it is installed, the same command will run everywhere, not able to find out that. This is documentation, that's okay. Okay, it is not here, I think I deleted it, okay, it is set up, this, here, I will teach you how to run it via on a bare metal. Okay, so these are the commands, anyhow, there are a lot of similarity, but I will teach you this thing later, means in the coming class, so there are multiple ways. In which it can be created, if you can see here, demo cluster in A P South one is read ready, so now if I clear all these things and simply come here and say Cube C T L. Get all. You will see there is one service running, if I come here and say Cube C T L, get nodes, you will see there are two worker nodes. And if you see the IP address, you will come to know that these are the, these two machines. So this is my demo cluster one, come and see the IP address, one ninety-two, one sixty-eight, forty-eight, twenty-four. One ninety-two, one sixty-eight, forty-eight, twenty-four, and this guy. One ninety-two, sixty-eight, seventy-two, seventy-two, five. One ninety-two, sixty-eight, seventy-two, five, so these are my two worker nodes and it is completely being managed by E K S C T L or my. E K S Elastic Kubernetes Service, okay, so I just now showed you that there are multiple ways in which Kubernetes can ins. Can be installed, now because Kubernetes is an open source, different companies have come up with different ways. I will teach you how G C P installs it, in fact, G C P has a very different way of installing it, but whatever the installation way is, at the end of the day. They will use the same mechanism, same set of tools, so if I come here and run this piece of command, let me just run this piece of command here. Cube C T L run sample engine X, the image is engine X and the replica is two. So replicas, it is not taking, so by default one, it is what it will take. See here, pod sample engine X has been created, Cube C T L, get all. You will see one pod sample engine X has been creating, it is still creating, in some time you will see it got created. You can see it is up and running, now the good thing here is, if you come here and say, docker P S minus A. Docker is not found, so I have to go inside and check. Come here and say, Cube C T L, describe and odd name, same command, right? Same, everything is same, I can see. That inside this pod, this is the command, here if you see. Sample engine X is running, this is the container which is being picked up and the state is running, thirtieth September fourteen, fourteen nineteen is when it has been brought up. And the pulled successfully pulled, created, started, so the commands and all will remain same, only the way. You install Kubernetes will differ based on the environment and the tool which you are using, okay? So E K S you use Cube C T L run instead of, no, 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 Cube C T L run only you can use. See, the commands will remain same, all the Cube C T L commands will remain same, this is a different, this I'm creating a pod, that's why I ran this command. Cube C T L run is because I'm creating a pod, now if you want to use Cube C T L apply, like if you say I want to use Cube C T L apply, then you can come here.
Create, no sir, not the run, right?
No, no, that that run command is also there, wait, let me just show you that, give me one second, so let me say you are creating a pod.
That is ad hoc command, right?
Yes, that's ad hoc command, now you're trying to run it, let me say via your declarative way. So this is your pod example, right? Take this piece of code. Come here and say. Nano, pod dot YAML. Paste the container, whatever you have, now come here and say Cube C T L, apply minus F and whatever you have. It will go ahead and create it, or engine X, come here, Cube C T L, get all. Sorry, the spelling is wrong. You can see here, pod engine X is up and running from last sixteen seconds, so all the commands will remain as it is. Because at the end of the day, Kubernetes engine which is running inside is same, the only difference will come in the way you install it. People will install via COPS, people will install via Cube A D M, Cube, Cube Proxy, so there are many ways in which you can install. But the engine which runs inside will always be same. One very important thing, why did you use Kubernetes run, because that was a different command altogether, so Kubernetes run. Cube C T L minus minus help. So if you see, there is a run command also. Create, expose, run, see here. Run a particular image on a cluster, so there is a run command also, so I just ran it because there is a command. Okay, now, one very important thing which you must take care of, that in case your work is done. Please do not forget to delete your cluster, if you don't run, if you are not using your cluster. It is very important for you to go ahead and delete your cluster, because if you keep your cluster up and running. It will charge you and it will charge you good, good amount of money is charged, so always once your work is done, remember to do something like this. Cube C T L, sorry, E K S C T L delete cluster, the name of the cluster and in which region it is running. E K S C T L delete cluster, demo, demo cluster, I think, demo. And the region is A P South one, so slowly what it will happen is, it will go ahead and delete everything one by one. Okay, so please remember to delete your clusters, do not ever leave your cluster up and running, unnecessary, a huge amount of money will be charged on you. E K S is not covered under free tier. Okay, so in today's class, we learned how to create a cluster using E K S Elastic Kubernetes Service. To be very precise, E K S C T L and then once the cluster has been created, how to use the cluster and run your commands, both ad hoc and. Declarative, both commands will work here. Okay?
Hi, hi Vikas.
Yeah.
Yes, so actually, there we are using roles, so can you please, uh. Describe the roles.
So while teaching, I told.
Why we, uh, cloud formation for why we are using cloud formation role?
Okay, so I told you that when you install everything on A W S environment, okay, you will have to go by the A W S ways of working. In A W S, you have something called rules which gives you the desired permission and you have cloud formation which is equivalent to terraform and here it is. Infrastructure as a code. So this is the way in which you install in A W S or one of the ways in which you install.
So it is compulsory to include the role?
Yes, it is compulsory to include the rule, because at the end of the day, my E K S cluster is doing a lot of things on my behalf. So obviously, if it has to do a lot of things, it needs that setup permission, so that's the reason we will have to go ahead with this guy.
And in, uh, on. Uh, our Kubernetes, uh, we use security port only twenty-two, right? Uh, so there is been.
When you are creating a instance, the E K S, A W S management or Kubernetes management node, you only use that, yes.
So Kubernetes node, sorry, Kubernetes port number we have to open or not?
As of now, I have not opened any port number, as of now, I'm not exposing it to the outside world, so I don't have to go ahead and open any port for timeline. I don't have to open any port, later down the line, when I will expose it to the outside world, then I will go ahead and open, as of now, I no need to open anything.
So just one question.
Hello, one minute, one more question more, if we want to, uh, and. Uh, add a V P C group in Kubernetes, so how can we add our. Uh, V P C.
This E K S thing, if you go, if you read the steps, there are events which are happening, you will see automatically it is getting added. In case you want to create your own V P C, then there will be a different set of activities, then this is not the right way of doing it. That's a completely different way of doing it.
Yes, because there is automatic IP is getting. So if we want to.
You have to do everything from scratch, now I told you it's a managed service. Yes, things which will be ready-made or it will be given to you, now if you don't want the ready-made solution. Scratch, then you have to go and do everything from scratch, so there's a different way for that.
Um, so I've got question about, um.
Can you be a bit louder, Mama?
Yeah, of course, um, so I've got question about transformation, so when you use E K S, you have to integrate it with cloud formation, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so this is what you.
We are going by the documentation which A W S has provided and A W S says that if you're using E K S C T L, you will have to go by that.
Okay, so this is the reason why you use I U M, so that's, so then you 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 tell it from like, you keep that permission to to use.
Yeah, so that I can give all the desired permissions to get my, to my EC two instance, so EC two instance on my behalf can do all those activities.
Okay, so it's a form, then what, cloud formation, then we will have, we need to have access to.
Required permission, yes.
Okay, 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 yeah, thank you so much.
Uh, and because, uh, the parts you have created are, uh, later, uh, so in. We how that will be saved in the worker notes, means like two pods you have created, so two on each or one, one on one or one on one?
No, 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 one on one, one on the other one, yes.
Okay. And later we can add replica set for that, right?
Yes, you can add any number of replica sets, that will, that will be up to you.
Okay.
Yeah, because by default, when we create the E K S cluster, it will use the A W S load balancer or else.
No, I have done everything on cloud server, so everything will be on cloud server.
Okay, then Kubernetes service like a load balancer, we are using it.
Everything, everything is on cloud, so whatever you see here, everything is on cloud.
No, no, I'm not talking about that one, in A W S, there is a service called load balancer is there, right?
Ah.
So when we, when we create the cluster, so it will automatically use the, that load balancer or else.
It will automatically use the load balancer, correct?
Okay.
And sir, are we going to work with again S S H?
Hey, S S H will be there, no, whenever you talk about Unix server, S S H will be definitely there.
Uh, between this master and worker nodes, whatever we.
That will, that is automatically done, you don't have to go and exclusively do anything there.
Oh, so this is automation, right, and I mean, instead of doing manually?
Yes, this is. Yes, this is entire automation.
In the actual in Docker, when we learn, all those things you have done in the manual.
Hmm.
Here it is the automatic. Now it has to. So in the real time, it will be done like this only, no?
Yes, it will be done this way.
Uh because.
In in our.
Yeah, uh because so the ports you have created, right? So can we see that in a graphical mode in Kubernetes dashboard or something, any?
Yes, when you go to the UI, definitely you can.
Okay, yeah.
Hello, because yes, so we are upgrade the our instance. Uh T two micro to T three medium or.
Okay, I think lost connectivity. Fine, guys, we meet tomorrow again.
Hello.
Yeah.
Uh that's one small doubt. Like uh this one, when the CPU load get increased, right? If you want to like auto scale and anything like, we need to add the node means how it can do the in the configuration side.
Yes, in the configuration file, you increase the number of pods. So basically you increase the number of replicas.
Actually, we have to deploy it again, right?
No, you just increase the replica count. It will automatically take care of that.
So in the master node, we have to run a command like a scale up the.
Ah, see, you can do imperative declarative both. Imperative means you use minus minus scale and in declarative you go ahead and create your replica set.
And then if I want to increase the nodes means how how we need to come to.
That's what. If you want to increase the node, then you have to run this.
Of because I'm asking about nodes.
Ah nodes, that's what I'm saying. If you go.
Ah. Yeah, tell me, tell me.
No. Who can I have? Who not here? How can I?
No, I will not.
No. Sorry, I don't. Ah, yeah.
No, if you want to add the nodes means how we can do add the.
There will be a command when I'll be teaching you COPs, I will tell you how to go with that.
No, sir. Thanks.
Please remind me when we are teaching.
Yes, uh why we are updating our instance?
Because T two micro will not support. T two micro comes with one core CPU, one GB RAM. It will not support.
So my question is, we we are increasing our work, we are updating our worker nodes. Uh but our master node is.
Master does only the management activity. So there is no problem with that. In case your workload increases, T two micro is not supporting, you have to increase the master also.
Okay, so we we have to update our worker nodes, not a master node.
I told if workload increases, management work increases, master node also has to be upgraded.
So my master node have not much load, right?
No.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Fine, see you then, guys. Bye bye.